Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You can't go out with all, you're grounded.
You can drink white wine, that's clear.
That is such a hideous procedure.
The procedure is okay.
It's that.
Actually, the name is a full call, you feel pretty good.
Who invented that? Swamp water.
I'd like to call the Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council Meeting of North Branford to order at 7:04 PM. We'll start with salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mayor Dooley. Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Candelora. Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
Counselor Rose. Counselor Viglione.
Here.
Counselor Zampiano.
Here.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the September 17th, 2019 special WPCA and regular town council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, or discussion? Any corrections? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Moving into the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Any citizen statements regarding WPCA? There's no unfinished business listed. Any new business? None. Citizen statements regarding WPCA? None, we'll move over to the regular town council meeting. Report. Sorry. Go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion to add L. under Committee Reports.
Yep.
The High School Feasibility Study Committee.
What was that?
The.
High School Feasibility.
So there's a motion to amend the agenda to add item L. under Reports of Boards and Commissions for the High School Feasibility Study.
Second.
Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, going into Reports of Committees, Boards and Commissions, Economic Development. They have a special meeting tomorrow night at 5:00. Due to Roger Solway is going to be on vacation when their regular meeting is, so they moved it up to a special meeting, which is tomorrow night at 5:00. Park and Recreation. I was unable to attend because that was the night of the swearing in of the Deputy Chief, but I believe Mike went.
Yeah, I was in attendance, I can report out on that. It was a very good meeting, productive meeting. It started out a little slow with respect to the minutes, and they're working their way through that, so they tabled those in order to review the record and make sure that they're comfortable with that. So they worked through that. We had a presentation by Zach Chittenden for the Eagle Scout Project for a press box for the Youth Football League that went well. I actually met with Zachary and his parents and Tom Cowell about the necessary building permits and design for that. So that is going through and going forward. They approved the recommendation to go forward with that project. And then they talked through their regular park and fields. I don't think there was anything extraordinary to mention that I recall, other than that there is a haunted hayride scheduled for this month, the 25th and 26th. Shaun is looking, obviously the courts in Northford are coming along, so he'll be certainly monitoring that. And I think that was pretty much it. We had a few other things that related to the training that they had, going back to Attorney Moreno's presentation in the workshop with just a few items that they were looking for with respect to items like secretary, we talked about secretary. And where does that leave the committee in terms of their role? And so we'll be meeting and getting an answer to that for them.
And I know one other thing, there's, it's a commission of five people, and they've only had three since the end of June. And it makes it difficult for them to meet on their regular scheduling night with only three, because that is the quorum, so if one of them cannot make it or something. So they're really looking forward, they would really like appointments coming from, there's two seats open, coming forth from the RTC and DTC so that they can get a full commission again. So it's not as hard for the existing three members when they meet, because I know that has been an issue for trying to get their meetings on their regular scheduled things. Police Commission.
The Police Commission had a special meeting last week, the 24th, and that was the swearing in ceremony of the Deputy Chief, and it was very well attended. The next meeting, regular meeting, is Tuesday, October 15th at 6:00 PM. It's different, it's on a different day because of the holiday.
Fire Commission.
Fire Commission, nothing to report, the next meeting is this Thursday.
Okay. Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee. We met tonight with the Board of Ed as they're starting teacher negotiations, so we had a meeting prior to this meeting just to discuss upcoming negotiations. Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning.
I wasn't able to attend the last meeting.
Okay. East Shore District Health Department. No report on that. North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
The next meeting is next Wednesday, October 9th. But what I would like to ask Mike, if you would add to the agenda for our second meeting in October for Town Council, the police facility and its site, I think it's only fair that this council, who is, people have been working for a couple of years talking about the facility, that this council have an opportunity to, and I've talked to the mayor about this, have an opportunity to perhaps hopefully approve the site for a facility.
Finance Subcommittee.
Excuse me, Marie, what time is that, that October 9th meeting?
Seven, it's in here, in this room.
Finance Subcommittee, we met tonight prior to the council meeting. Two of the things that we discussed, one is the fire department leases. Attorney Moreno has been working to draft a more formal agreement, something that actually looks like a lease. And so we discussed that and have some points that the town manager will be discussing with the town attorney and come back with another draft to us before the town manager discusses them with the fire departments. And we also talked about the CIP budget, the capital improvements budget. There were some accounts that were closed out, and we have approximately $280,000 in capital funds to discuss, and that's further on in the meeting as to what we want to do with that money. Blight Subcommittee.
Blight Subcommittee met most recently on the 19th of September. They went through the drafts that they had, they reviewed all of the edits that came from the town attorney, and incorporated all of those edits. The Blight Committee then voted to refer the draft of the Blight ordinance that's proposed to the town council for consideration at this meeting, it's further on the agenda. And in the expectation that the town council will consider that draft for a public hearing at an upcoming meeting. The draft of the Blight ordinance that's proposed is in the packet. For the Blight Committee, at least at this time, there is no further scheduled meeting.
Okay. NBHS Feasibility Study.
There was a meeting, there was the first meeting this morning of the Feasibilities Committee. Folks who are doing our study had quite an extensive report and a schedule which I will make copies, I think we should make copies for everybody here. They certainly are up and running. What they have decided to do is that the first phase, first part of the first phase would be a walkthrough, which is going to occur on Columbus Day while the building's empty, so that they can go in every nook and cranny. After that, it will be follow-up, they want to have a walkthrough with the building official and the fire marshal. They've asked for all kinds of documents that have, any studies that have been done in the past, they want to be able, and I think they were already starting to get some of those. Then in late October, they want to meet with the department heads at the high school. They want to have a community information center in the fall. It's very ambitious, this committee. They have kind of mapped the whole thing out and hope to have a report by June. One of the other interesting pieces of information is.
By June?
A report, just their report of what they have discovered so far. Will be there.
Well, originally when we talked to them, they were going to have something for us by budget season, before budget season, so June would be.
Yeah, actually, I think what they're, Marie, I think what they're trying to get to is by December.
Oh, by December, okay.
Yeah, and then.
I had to leave the meeting early, so I might have missed something.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we're doing a due diligence in terms of the documents and so forth, so I'm going to be also coordinating a meeting with planning, with the town planner, building official, fire marshal as well, that they want to speak with and talk with as well with respect to regulations, codes, and things of that nature, obviously. And any documents that we may have on our side from the high school in terms of blueprints or, you know, building information. So, yeah, they've got a very aggressive schedule, and, you know, we're putting together the meeting schedule, it should be confirmed later this week for those dates.
I mean, it is very comprehensive, and I think they are going to meet with all the stakeholders involved, they're going to meet with the community, you know, have a presentation of the community. They have a really good handle on what you have to do with the State Department in terms of helping with that, too. Because I think that, correct if I'm wrong, Mike, they said you're probably looking at an eight-year window right now in terms of any kind of construction, in terms of what you have to do these days with the State Department. I know I wrote that down.
Eight years from start to finish?
Right.
Or?
It's much more comprehensive now, and the state kind of steps in.
And again, they're going with the charge that they have to look at three different options, right?
Right.
So they've got to put all of that together, and there's a lot of different regulations or different ways in which they line the funding up, you know, in terms of how that's going to bear out. You know, we're trying, I was, after Marie left, trying to get to the point where, okay, we need all of this information for the public's consumption to know what that local impact is going to be on all three of those options. And that's one of their deliverables that they have to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Town Managers' Report.
Yeah, item A is just an update on the, I put, it's sort of the sign program, but the latest was the Dog Park Sign and a memo from Carrie in terms of where we are with the Welcome to Town Signs, Park Signs, and in this case, another park, the Dog Park Sign. So she had thrown that in, and I realize now that there is some discussion, I think we'll, I'd like to get input on that, but realizing that it'd probably be a combined sign that would say, you know, Augur House or Augur Farm and Homestead, and then more likely a Dog Park Sign hanging off of that designation, which I think makes sense, because there also is already a bulletin board type structure by the Dog Park that we can tag as well.
Yeah, I don't agree with just the sign that says Dog Park.
Right.
Because it's near the Augur House, and if they're going for a historic.
Designation, right.
Isn't that whole grant about the historic declaration for it?
Yeah.
I would rather name it, if we're doing a sign, that it's the Augur House or whatever, and the Dog Park kind of is secondary under it. It has a little sign so that people see it and know it's there, but just a sign that says Dog Park.
And so what Carrie and I were talking about also is, I think, is stepping back to do an internal on the rest of the gateway signs and locations as well. But the funding is there to do the rest of them, and the Dog, or Augur Farm and Home with the Dog Park combination. But we have to take a look at some of these other fields as well. And obviously, part of that, you know, Fran will be involved in that, I want to involve the rec department as well and make sure we get that. Because quite honestly, like, for instance, you know, the Durham Line, I'm not sure there's, I'm not sure where the sign was, when we had one, and if there's a, you know.
There's enough clearance.
Enough clearance and setback, you know, to get something up there. So we've got to do some more internal review with the other issue on the, you know, Branford line, where the Rotary project is going to go, we've got to obviously hold off on that, we can't do anything with that until they do that project. So that'll probably be, I would think, the last sign we do in the sequencing, but it is moving along. And it just, yeah, I think I've gotten the right, the guidance there to move forward with the Dog Park and the Augur Farm and House.
Okay.
We'll come back. Next, item B, just update status on filling the director position, I have a memo in the packet for your review, and essentially, I'm just looking to have a little bit more time to do some, you know, review of Shaun and his position, and we'll have a decision for you on the 15th.
Okay. The next item is Public Works Treework.
Yeah, you have a memo in your packet from Fran indicating that we have some problems with tree work, with the amount of tree work, the amount of dangerous trees out there. This is an item that's not going away, and we're going to have to, probably, just to bring to your awareness that we've got an issue there, and that we'll probably, I would think, wait to the end of the fiscal year to deal with that. But it's, I'll let Fran speak to the fact that 74 trees, and there's a lot more out there. And I don't know, you know, it can take a little bit more analysis to find out, prioritize which ones we've got to take down. And I don't think it's, you know, fair to say that, you know, we could do it with Public Works personnel, sure, but to a certain extent, when they're 50 or 60 feet plus, you know, you're going to need to get a professional in there to do that, and that's where the cost comes in. And I know I just saw other towns are grappling with this, and then hit hard with other diseased tree, the ash bore, and it's problematic, so, but I'll defer to Fran on that.
Yeah, so as of July 1st fiscal year, you know, we cut down, was it contract, there's 74 trees. Now that's trees pruning, including crane work. We have three or four jobs that entail having a crane there and police, so all those costs are in there. So right now, we're overexpending on the budget already. So going forward, there's still a lot, we're probably getting, every day we get between three and five trees, almost every day, at least three, three trees at average. And we have a list, so when we get five trees cut, there's five more here. So, once we get through with our pavement, we're going to be out there, but there are several trees that are way out of our reach there. We're talking 80, 90-foot trees that, you know, we couldn't even possibly do. So I guess it's just a heads up that our budget's spent, overspent already, and we probably have, you know, I don't want to guess at the number, but there's quite a list left to do. And these are on town property along the road, or, i.e., we just got some that were from North Farms, that's our property, that's on the border, these, you know, trees leaning over. We have another piece of property down here, the Jerse Lane, there's four trees in there that are leaning into the, you know, dropping branches on people's yards, kids around, so it's not getting better.
Do you have any rough estimate of what?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I can go back and count the amount of trees we have to do currently, but it's probably, I don't even want to guess.
Okay.
There's quite a few. I mean, there's probably 30 right now sitting there waiting to get down. You know, and they're all over, it's not just in one area, they're from one end of the town to the other. And they're mostly white oaks and ash that's going, there's some maple trees in there, but 90% of them are ash and the white oak that got hit pretty hard.
So we're planning to go forward taking them down?
Well, I don't think we have a choice. I mean, they're at the point where.
And the ash has been dead now long enough, so they're really dead.
Yeah. I mean, really, we can't turn our back on it. Some of the trees, some of these that have been.
So how do we fund it? Anthony?
That's a good question.
Or, there's.
Maybe we have to do it.
There's a discussion later on also, on the CIP.
Yeah, but I mean.
I know, but it's still money that is there that could be used.
Well, trees took a long time to grow.
Yeah.
I'll keep you updated, but it's, you know, winter's coming on, so it's, you know.
Okay.
Unfortunately, they're huge, they are huge trees, I mean, either seed mill trial or.
Yeah, and I just wanted to highlight it and kind of put it in the category of, you know, sort of dangerous slash, and not quite emergency, but dangerous in something we're obligated to do, as opposed, you know, that we're not, it's not overexpending without preauthorization, the rule we discussed previously. That's why I wanted to single this out and bring to your attention, so you'd be aware of it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next item, Community Events and Presentations. Nothing. Citizen Statements.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I could go back, yeah, I'm asleep at the wheel. On the tree issue, actually, I have to let the town know that we're recipient of a white oak, thanks to the Connecticut Tree Protective Association to celebrate the 100th anniversary of Connecticut's Arbor's Law. And so Fran took receipt of that, we have a beautiful plaque here, and it's going out at, or is actually already out at Wall Field, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the tree, that's where the tree was planted?
Yeah, it was planted on top of the hill, you know, the hill on Wall Field.
Yeah.
That was a safe spot, I think.
Okay.
They donated 126 trees, every municipality got a tree.
All right. Thank you. Citizen Statements and Petitions Correspondence.
Good evening. My name is Dottie Savistano, 43, Sunnyside Drive, North Route. And I'm also president of the Totoka Historical Society. I recently requested a town sign to designate the historical society on Route 80 and at the Atwater Campus. The request was really for the spaces, the sign with the space and the letters, so that we could designate when these historical buildings that we have on that campus are open to the republic, the days and the times. As well as, we have special events that are always upcoming. For example, we have an authentic colonial dinner coming up in October that is very difficult to fill, but we don't have a lot of money, and this is how we do our fundraising. The town, I believe, the place is really a town venue, as I see it. It houses the Reynolds Bear's House, which is on the National Registry already. And we've also gone through a process called STEPS with the Connecticut Historical Society that designated as a museum. In addition to that, we have the Miller Barn, which houses 17th and 18th century farm implements and machinery, which corresponds with our development efforts as an agricultural town. And also, the Little White Gas Station, if you don't know it, it was the Angelo 40 gas station, and it was the first gas station in the town of North Branford. In addition, we are looking to relocate the Little Red Schoolhouse so that we have all, and that's in the process, but that also is on the National Registry. And we want to have all the historical buildings on one campus. I could go on and tell you everything we do, and it'd be nice to have the sign so people could come in and hear about everything we do and see all these cultural assets that are on this campus. So the sign is nice. But I think, I mean, you could see the clear advantage of having this sign, especially since we're in the throes of using, doing the plan of conservation and implementation. So I think by creating all the cultural center of a lot of things that we have to offer for North Branford would be an asset now and going forward with the plan that I reviewed, which really makes sense to bring a sign and designate this in the future as a historical district. And this, you know, alongside of the Atwater Campus's North Street, which has all these historical homes, and there's a lot, there's really a lot to offer for the town. And literally, you know, I talked to some people even this evening that tell me, oh, I never knew that was there. When are you open? Because it's just difficult to get, even though I love the Totoka Times, that is really not promoted. So I love the new signs, I talked to Carrie about requesting funds or getting a new sign, and I hope you say yes. Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. We'll start the public hearing and then. So, we have a public hearing for our proposed purchasing ordinance 2019-1. Can I read the notice?
The North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on the proposed ordinance 2019-1, which amends chapter 84 of the Code of the Town of North Branford, entitled Purchasing as summarized below. The proposed revisions to the purchasing ordinance add new language to the definition of supplies to exclude the purchase of component parts required to repair or rehabilitate existing equipment or mechanical systems in current use by the town. Language is also added to section 84.10 to exclude purchases of parts required to repair existing equipment or mechanical systems in current use by the town, unless the town council determines that it would be in the town's best interest for such purchase to be based on competitive bids. Public comments on this matter are welcome. A copy of the ordinance is on file in the office of the town clerk, Atwater Memorial Library, Edward Smith Library, and posted on the town's website. Dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this 16th day of September 2019. Lisa Valenti, Lisa A. Valenti, Town, North Branford Town Clerk.
Okay, so the public hearing is open at 7:32. Is there any member of the public that would like to get up and say anything in regards to this proposed ordinance change? Any discussion from council members?
I think it makes sense. You know, I mean, we've had so many examples of where somebody could go buy a part, then we have to bid it.
Right.
So somebody goes and buys the part, but adds on to it, so.
Right. And we did have the language changed so that if we wanted, we still have the discretion of going out to bid if we wanted to on there. All right, hearing, no comments from the public. The public hearing will be closed at 7:32. The public hearing will be closed at seven thirty-four. And now we'll go back to citizen's statements.
Thank you, Bill Savistano, same addresses. I'm here to just bring you up to, a little bit later you're going to be talking about blight. I just want to give a little history of how we got to this point. Five years ago, there was a resident on my block that is a severe hoarder. General Lee came out and did a piece on him. It's all on YouTube. It's, it could be worth looking at, because you get a flavor from the person of just how hoarders are. So, anyway, so I had contact, this man is my neighbor, he's a combat veteran, he's had some issues, and he's a good guy. And I talked to him mostly on the block. And at some point, I talked about, he had mentioned about not getting all those benefits. Well, that opened the door for me to try to get him some help with the Veterans Administration. So, over the next two years, I had two different persons from the VA at different times, and basically, the idea was to help him with his benefits, but at the same time, see if you can help him with this issue we have. But with the HIPAA laws, they wouldn't tell me anything after that. So, fast forward a little bit. Now, we didn't have a CEO at the time, so Tom Ogarty came on approximately maybe two thousand seventeen. I got Tom involved because I saw some trash out there. So, he now was familiar with this, with this resident. So, again, we didn't have a blight ordinance. I spoke to Mike Paulus about this at the time. There was something in Hartford that could be considered for all towns, one of those things, you know, catch-all, but it never materialized. So, for about a year and a half, nothing was done. Two thousand seventeen, Tom started doing sort of progress reports on what he handles out of his office. And this address, along with another half a dozen severe hoarders, was on the report. Six months later, and we talked about it, they always talked about it at the Planning and Zoning meeting. Six months later, I happened to walk into that meeting, Tom was doing his six-month report. All of a sudden, Sunnyside Drive wasn't on there. So, I asked to speak. Now, they allowed me to speak. As you know, Planning and Zoning, there's no citizen's statement unless it's a public hearing or you're an applicant. But they very nicely allowed me to speak. We had a short discussion, and Tom explained why he took this person off, although he's still a severe hoarder. And I won't speak for Tom, but because it's in, it's all in the reports. So, but they promised that at some point, we would discuss this at another meeting. That was January of eighteen. Now, we went all the way up to November of eighteen, November first, we had our discussion. Several of us made a presentation. I have a letter I gave Mike to add to your packet that I wanted him to talk at times about people coming out to the meeting and if they have concerns about blight, that was the time. Well, Frank Mentone bumped the ad because of some political stuff. His paper was full. But we did have a half a dozen people that made a presentation that night. And I suggest, again, if you've got concerns for this and where we're coming from, view the video, November first, Planning and Zoning. So, after that, then we sort of got the blight committee going. And, oh, just before that, sorry, also, I gave Mike an article that was done about that discussion that night by Pam Johnson and the Sound. And really, that's another interesting read, because that explains what I said, but basically, anybody that spoke that night, and we talked about blight. Now, one thing, before I go further, this is not all about hoarding or severe blight. You have, and what we talked about, again, in the letters, is you have different stages. There are, I don't go all over town. I never visited Venter Drive where there was a hoarder. I never went out that way. But in my little area, there's several, several cases where people are in, getting towards a blight issue. You know, blight doesn't happen overnight or severe hoarding for sure. So, so basically, you have different stages. You get the guy that's got a trailer, a sailboat, and an RV. One year, two years later, he's got two sailboats, two RVs, and it escalates from that. And that's really what this ordinance is about. Now, Tom Ogarty, at the time, we started deliberations, he offered some information on what he would like to be added to what the ordinance we had already. And I believe most of that was incorporated with Mr. Marino's draft that you see in front of you today. And so, that's basically where we're at. I hope we really did have a good discussion on it. If we have to tweak it a little bit, let's do that. I think the time has come to do something. I mean, besides what people have laying on their property and here and there, and I don't want to go into certain individuals, but in the last thirty years, I mean, how many storage units do we really need? People are storing stuff all over the place. I guess we're fortunate they're in the storage units and not laying in the property. So, basically, let's have a good discussion. As a resident, I say I think we need this. As a taxpayer and a property owner, I think we expect this. Thank you.
Any other public comments, citizen's statements? Okay, moving on to resignation and appointments. We need to appoint a liaison to the Board of Education from the town council for teacher negotiations. Marie has done a wonderful job in the past, and I think out of the council members here, I mean, I'm speaking for myself, but she's the only one that's retired amongst those of us that can probably, that are running for reelection and going to be on the council beyond the terms here. So, Marie, would you like to be the liaison?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Is there anyone else interested? Just I don't want to exclude anyone, but...
Not a problem.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as our...
I would make that motion second.
Thank you, Dylan.
Anytime, Marie.
Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Upstate.
Counselor Fawnan.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Mike, can you send an email to Scott, just to let him know? Thanks. Okay. Unfinished business discussion in action, future budget planning initiative?
No items.
Update on nine forty-four Totoka Road remediation?
Good evening. I'm very pleased to report that since the last meeting, there has been a lot of activity in nine forty-four Totoka Road. The area was staked out for grading, of course, with the proposed plan. The areas to be regraded, the stockpile was stripped and stockpiled inside. Essentially, the majority of the site has been regraded. The contractor thinks he's pretty much at grade. They have the design engineer scheduled to verify the grades before they do any final grading and loming and seeding will come afterwards. But we wanted to make sure that they have the grades for the plan. That should occur tomorrow, and then it's a matter of fine grading, topsoiling, and loming and seeding. So, the push is to get it done. Very pleased to report, like I said, there was a lot of activity between the last meeting and now. They're a little over their time, but we're just pushing them to keep at it and get it taken care of as soon as possible. I will report in the next meeting, hopefully, but at that point, everything is seeded in time.
Thank you. Update on potential sale of three oh five Forest Road. Is this still tabled because we're waiting for...
Right.
Discussion next, at the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Discussion on proposed blight ordinance.
So, as we heard from citizen's statements and has been mentioned in committee reports, a group of citizens brought an idea of enacting a blight statute, a blight ordinance, which the town lacks and has been spoken of over the years, and worked hard to try and draft something that they thought would work for various aspects of issues here within the town. They didn't focus entirely on blight singularly. When they started looking at various towns in the region, they saw that they were using a somewhat more encompassing standard of performance and property maintenance standards, and they used that as a model to draft. It went through various iterations, and the council put together a blight subcommittee of two members of the town council, two members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and one public member, and worked through the various drafts and circulated comments. At our most recent meeting, the drafts were significantly edited for clarity and legal standards by our town attorney. And as I said in the committee report, there is in your packet, a draft of what the committee came up with. Counselor Diamond has courteously pointed out a mistake in the, in the draft due to cut and paste to be attentive to the attorney. And that is on page five, near the bottom, on waste and garbage and organic material. That is correctly stated on page six, Part B, regarding the location and use of curbside pickup containers. So, that can be easily rectified. I don't know if the town attorney wants to speak about this at all, but the town planner was involved, the zoning enforcement officer was heavily involved. And what this ordinance proposes to do is to significantly fill a gap, an absence, in the ability of the town to bring to bear its own interests in maintenance of a civil community. So, this is a nice, not terribly aggressive document that fills a first step toward what the town may need to improve the town.
Thank you. I would just like to commend the subcommittee. I thought they worked well together, trying to put forward a product that they believed would benefit the town. And while I know there will be differing opinions on the concept of such an ordinance, as I stated at the subcommittee meeting, an ordinance like this should be viewed as giving another tool to your enforcement officers. But the significance to a blight or, you know, a blight ordinance specifically, is that it gives the town priority when it places a lien, so it gives it more teeth in its ability to try to clean up any blight that exists. So, unlike a zoning ordinance that may accomplish the same result, the blight ordinance is going to give you a super priority over mortgages and other encumbrances on the land records, providing that your enforcement officers follow the proper process. But again, I did simply want to commend the subcommittee. I thought they did an effective job.
I think I'll just follow up with a couple of more things. The committee was very, very sensitive to the resources that the town could bring to bear in enacting such an ordinance. And in the writing of this, I think they took a lot of interest in making as clear as possible that it wasn't establishing new commissions, it was further empowering various actors who act on the behalf of the town, such as the town planner, the building officials, and public works. It does not require, as it's currently conceived, again, establishing any new commissions. It's working within the framework that the town currently has, and it does not envision hiring more personnel.
I think it's a long time coming, and I think it's a great idea.
I think it's very comprehensive. I was very impressed, just kind of, you know, for the average citizen, and helped me a little bit too, just walking through, what happens if the zoning enforcement officer finds, like, for example, I'm curious about the one here about lawns and landscaping. So, if the zoning enforcement officer notices a tree on somebody's property that looks like it could fall and hurt someone, what's the process then with something like this?
So, the process would, again, this would be a, the enforcement of this ordinance, like zoning, would be discretionary. So, no matter where you're reading in the ordinance, if there are matters of concern, as there may be on zoning regulations, there is no difference in that it is a discretionary act on behalf of the town. But the process generally would be, and I often recommend, that the enforcement officer, like in a zoning matter, reach out to the property owner and notify the property owner of the problem. And depending upon the individual property owner, the enforcement officer can make a decision as to, is this something that fits within a zoning regulation? I can do a zoning enforcement process? Or is this something that I would prefer to use the property standards or blight ordinance? And generally speaking, the property owner is given a period of time to remediate the concern, and if the problem is resolved, then no further action. In order to save the administrative time of actually writing out notices and following the process, I have found successful in other communities, an informal beginning, and that was that reach out to the property owner and try to just see what's going on. Is it a senior, a senior who is residing alone and doesn't have the physical ability to do some things? Is there, is a family that is economically struggling? And so, again, while we, property standards under a blight should not be driven by someone's financial ability or their age, we do, I think, need to keep certain things in perspective, because the ultimate goal here is to bring properties into compliance, not to penalize people for things that are beyond their control.
So, then you're saying it's really a...
So, then you're saying it's really a discussion, the first step?
Well, I always start, I recommend you start it with a discussion. Because if there's a, if you're going to bring a blight citation against a property owner and follow the process, ultimately, that process will include a hearing before the hearing officer. And ultimately, if the hearing officer determines that the blight officer was correct in his or her judgment, all the town will have to do, once that process has been complete, is go down to the superior court and convert that decision dollars into a judgment. And, you know, again, that has impacts. Normally, if there's a mortgage on the property, if there's a proper following of the process, that blight lien takes super priority over the mortgage. What I have seen most mortgage companies do is simply pay the fine because they want to protect their interest in the real estate. So, what does that do? That takes that payment and adds it to the debt of the mortgage. So, you know, so the property owner ultimately is going to have to pay that when they go to either sell their house or pay off their mortgage. So, because we live, what I like to say is, we live amongst our neighbors. So, we should try to keep in mind that these are our neighbors that we have to interface with through these tools. And we should look at them not as being something that is completely punitive in nature, but it's to put everyone on notice that we have an expectation in our community that we're going to live by minimum standards, and these are what our minimum standards are, so that we maintain basic health, safety, and welfare, and useful enjoyment of each other's property. Because if your house or my house is complete with blight, and I'm your neighbor, that's eroding your useful enjoyment of your house, and that's not fair to you. So, the ultimate goal of this ordinance should be to give your enforcement officers a stronger vehicle to bring properties into a standard, and to put everyone on notice as to what those standards are. So, but from a process standpoint, it would go through the hearing officer process.
Thank you.
You are.
Is this town-wide, or what zones is it?
It's town-wide.
So, it applies to residential, commercial, industrial?
Agriculture?
Well, there are, I believe that
Agriculture is exempt.
There are exemptions.
Where are the exemptions? I didn't, I looked through it. I didn't see that.
Oh, no, that's actually very clear.
It may be. I just didn't see it.
Yeah, and I will give that to you in a moment. If you look in section two, purpose and intent, and it should be on page two, the second full paragraph.
Page two.
The second full paragraph. "This ordinance shall apply uniformly to all residential, non-residential, and undeveloped premises now in existence or hereafter constructed, maintained, or modified, but shall exclude property owned by the town, agricultural lands as defined in chapter 22-3B of the Connecticut General Statutes, land dedicated as public or semi-public open space or preserved in its natural state through conservation easements, or areas designated as inland wetlands and watercourses."
Okay. So, how is that fair if, say, we have, there's resident or residents that live next to a farm that could be unsightly? Seeing that we're a farm town?
A farm that's unsightly?
Well, if they have
I mean, all farms, I mean, all farms don't look like the Brady Bunch pictures on TV. I mean, you could have rusty old machines. You could have equipment that doesn't operate. I mean, we're
Farms are covered by the Connecticut General Statutes. We don't have any
No, that's not what I asked. I asked, how is it fair to that resident that has to live by a certain code or a certain ordinance, and that their next-door neighbor might not be able to? I don't know if there's anyone that exists, but I'm asking the question.
And what George was saying is, we don't have a say, so it's not up to us.
Well, fairness is, fairness is in the ordinance, in that all property owners are treated fairly and equitably under the law. The law makes certain exemptions in certain situations in almost all circumstances, right? Farms are exempt from wetland regulations in most instances. You know, how is that fair? It's, the law has built in exclusions because of a greater public policy related to the reason behind those exclusions, right? Because we can't live without a farm, because we need to eat. And so, we take certain exceptions in that instance. Now, you can say, and I understand your point, what if there are six hoop houses, only two of which are utilized for the farming purpose? The other two are kind of ripped and unsightly, you know? Under this ordinance, that would be exempt. You know, what we do in our town, in my hometown, it is also exempt, you know?
Yeah, no, I understand that.
We approach that property owner, and we have a conversation.
I understand that. I'm asking about the property owner that has to live by a certain ordinance, and their next-door neighbor happens to be a farm, and they don't have to live by that ordinance. And I understand that there's a state, but I'm asking, how are we? We are representing the townspeople. How do we make it fair for them? I mean, are we overreaching anywhere here? I mean, I read in here that if you're, I believe I read, if your trash cans are at the curb for more than 24 hours, that's a violation.
Well, the trash cans, of course, were inserted into this effort by this council. We were directed in the subcommittee to consider the trash cans. And the trash cans show up as an issue in property maintenance or blight ordinances in virtually all the communities that we looked at. In fact, this community is, in fact, somewhat notable for not having such an ordinance, where all around us, almost uniformly, not exactly uniformly, but almost uniformly, you'll find something very much like this. We've probably looked at 12, 12 or 14 different towns, as well as looking at guidance from the Office of Legislative Research for what's being done elsewhere around the state, best practices and recommendations. This is not particularly aggressive. Again, it's not meant, at least from the point of view of the people who worked on it, it's not meant to be punitive. It is meant to bring into line some behaviors that are remarkable. And, you know, if you think about something like this, it's the epitome of, you know, an effort toward economic development. It's among the best practices. It looks for issues that are, that could be a problem, and it seeks to remediate them in the best possible way. There's a lot of considerations throughout. There are slow steps, and
But is there a problem?
People have noted these situations as problems throughout the years that, at least I've been active on this council, and you can see some issues around town. There are not a lot of them, but there are some. And, you know, for trash cans and containers, bringing in your trash cans, putting them out's a different issue. But bringing them in, certainly, you find them, at least on roads near where I live, in the road, having fallen over. They need to be brought in some way, not on the road, not at the road. And we talked about that. That was also an issue for, that's being considered by planning and zoning separately because it might affect some of their regulations as well.
Any other comments from the council? Okay, so what's the timeline, Mike, as far as for a public hearing?
Yeah, well, I did talk to Lisa. We can, it's doable. If the council tonight decides to set for the 15th, we can do that. I'll have to work with Ben to get a summary to Lisa for tomorrow. And if we get that, if you approve tonight and move to a hearing for the 15th, I can get a summary to Lisa tomorrow. She can get it in the newspaper and publicize. We can get it for the 15th at 7:30.
But we would have to advertise in the New Haven Register?
No, I think she thought she can get in the sound for tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
So, with that, given that there has to be one typo corrected, I'd like to make a motion that the council approve with corrections the draft of the blight ordinance for public hearing on October 15th.
I'll second that.
It's the one change, the one change was on
It's on page five.
There's a line of text that fell off. Yeah, I just want to, before you leave, and I just want to make sure the town manager, I have that. Absolute verbatim, absolutely.
I'll leave that.
I mean, it's on the agenda, you don't necessarily, but that's when the So, the public hearing would be on the 15th, and you can decide at that meeting either to continue or if you close it, and then you can vote on it?
Incorporate comments if there are additional comments, changes?
Right. So, the ultimate ordinance isn't, doesn't necessarily have to look exactly like the recommended ordinance going into the process. So, Tom, if you have concerns about certain sections, you should raise those concerns and maybe suggest elimination, changing. You can continue to modify the ordinance through the, you know, even after the public hearing process, because that's the purpose of the public hearing process, to get the comments. And then, if there are changes that you think are suitable, you can make them. Or you can reject, you can reject it all out of hand. You can adopt it all, or you can incorporate changes.
Well, I just, we've made it this far.
In this process or without it?
In North Branford since, what?
1644.
Well, then it was, then it was Branford. I'm just having a, I really have a hard time. I'm very concerned about it.
So, the motion's on the floor to set a public hearing date for October 15th, 7:30?
Correct.
Okay, for the proposed ordinance, and it has been seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
No.
Okay, moving on to new business. First one is quarterly report from Stephanie Malik, representative for the Dan Crossgrove Animal Shelter.
Good evening. If you could just refer to the two-page handout that's in your packet. The first page just highlights some statistics from our annual report for the fiscal year ending in June 2019. Just some notable stats. We had over 10,000 visitors during that fiscal year. And the shelter itself, as well as our director, received several awards, which are listed underneath. And then, I added some stories about some specific animals that came out of North Branford on the bottom that are currently under the care of our shelter. And then, on the second page, this is the quarterly report for the new fiscal year beginning in July of 2019. September is not updated yet. Laura's still working on that. So, it would be for July and August. And our next fundraiser is the end of October at the Owen Ego Inn, and all proceeds will go toward our medical fund.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, while we're talking about this, have you gotten anywhere with our contract?
No, it's up to the manager.
Okay, it's out of your hands now, so it's over on this side of the table? And so, where do we stand with that?
I have not heard back from Jamie. We'll continue to try. We've not connected yet.
Okay. Okay, next item is approval of proposed ordinance 2019-1, proposed purchasing ordinance.
I'll move that the town council adopts the proposed ordinance 2019-1 entitled Purchasing as Presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is capital improvement plan 2019-20 through 2024-25, eight-24 referral to planning and zoning.
As we typically do, the capital plan is adopted after the operating budget. And in the packet, the capital plan, again, the key point to remember is that only the current year, 1920, is a binding year. The out years are basically for planning purposes. So, the current year plan, there's some changes as it relates to what was in the document that you had at your budget time. A couple items were changed due to funding shifts from the state municipal project grant, $25,000 out of $35,000 for Company Three's extrication equipment, was shifted into the other funding column. And as Deputy Mayor mentioned, that was about $313,000. That was the result of closing out of two capital project funds. And $5,000 out of the crack ceiling was moved into that again, so that the amount that's in the municipal project grant column ties into the actual amount that we are receiving from them. That does leave, as Deputy Mayor also mentioned, about $280,000 of money that you can choose to assign to other projects, or you can choose just to carry that money, and we can use it in subsequent years as other needs arise. Relating to Mr. Marola's concerns earlier, I would suggest in the budget fund column, there are some items that I think we will have some savings this year, some of those capital projects, that I would suggest we hold off, moving money around until the left brand do his work, and then we can backfill it with some, perhaps, some capital money. Items that come to mind are the revaluation software. We budgeted 25, and the assessor negotiated that down to about $10,000. So, there'll be some savings there. The townwide replacement of PCs and servers, we budgeted 165. There might be some savings there. It's a philosophical change that we need to discuss. We are changing from buying physical items to going more to a subscription-type basis, as you do in a lot of things in your house. Some examples are Office 365. In the past, we usually spent $25,000, $30,000 and buy the software. Well, now, Office 365 is the latest Microsoft Well, now Office three sixty-five is the latest Microsoft version, allows you to access files throughout the world. But instead of being a capital purchase, it's more of a subscription service. So you might see some savings in that line, as opposed to buying things. Another item that comes to mind is Public Works, looking at replacing their time clock. We're changing all our PCs, the new PCs that we're buying are Windows ten. Their current time clock won't work on Windows ten. So do we buy hardware and invest in capital expenditures, or we're looking at is more of a cloud-based subscription-type service with a facial recognition for his time clock? So there's a couple examples, and again, going back to Dave with the vision software, the reason why it came down so low is that we're not buying the software per se, we're more of a subscription-type service. So there might be some savings in that capital line, you see the one sixty-five. Unfortunately, the downside is going to be that our operating expenses are going to be increasing going forward, but that seems to be the way a lot of things are going. Looking at our phone system, we could probably spend ten, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars on a phone system, a box-type deal we've had for a hundred years. Or do we go with an IP-based subscription-type service, which is probably the delta for town halls, laying about a hundred dollars more a month? Gives you disaster recovery, gives you call forwarding, gives you voicemail, things that we don't have currently. But again, it goes from putting fifteen thousand dollars out of our pocket today to buy, from buying a box, to an ongoing operating increase expense. So there might be some savings in that one sixty-five. I looked down at the auger roof, we budgeted twenty, I believe the PO was for seventy, four hundred dollars. There's some savings there. The painting, I think, believe, came in under budget as well. So I would say, advise Mr. Marola to do his work, take care of the trees, you don't want to have any hazards, obviously. And we could either backfill it with some capital money, or pray for another mild winter that we had like last year, and maybe there'll be some savings in his other accounts that we can move money around. But certainly not hold up the work that he needs to do for the tree removal. But I wouldn't, I'd be hesitant to spend capital money on an operating expense, even though it's a large item, big-ticket item, it just defeats the whole logic of capital money versus operating items. Aside from that, the capital plan, there were some items that were put forward that were discussed, I don't want to go over them again, or just let them lie, or?
So, I just, the NVIS brick and window repair?
Yes.
That number of, because that's something that's new, because that wasn't originally in the budget.
Correct, thank you, yeah. The four seventy-one, in the education section, the four seventy-one nine hundred and the twenty-eight thousand were two things that were also added after the fact, the twenty-eight thousand was using auditorium proceeds money for lighting, communications, and the flooring issue they had at the auditorium. And the four seventy-one nine used the money from the balance of the water infiltration project, as well as the balance of the NVIS construction fund project to accomplish that. Again, as you mentioned earlier, do you want to keep that money in abeyance to the other money until we figure out if that project is totally complete? We mentioned last time, the window flashing wasn't addressed there. There's a couple different issues, and I think I agree with your logic to, let's finish it once and for all, we can, you know, go to bed at night and say we've solved every problem in that school, regardless of what it takes to get there, we need to get there eventually. It's a shame that, you know, the issues still exist. So I guess I would, I would agree with your position to, you know, sit on the two eighty for the time being, and, you know, see how next year plays out, and we can hopefully solve the NVIS situation once and for all.
But I understand, just, I understand what you're saying about the tree thing, but I'm very concerned about that, and I'm sure Fran is very concerned. I mean, can we, at some point, can we take some of that money and transfer it to another fund to cover? I mean, it seems to me that there's-
Well, they're going to go ahead with the tree.
Right, we have contingency money, general fund, we can use, we can do that tomorrow if you wanted to. My point is, there might be other savings in these other budget fund items, aside from contingency. So that's always the fallback, contingency is there to solve these unplanned items.
Right, well, that's what, so, okay.
So he can go ahead and do the work.
He can go ahead and do the work.
We'll fund it, depending on what, where we get the funds, we'll do it later on, because it could be a company.
Doesn't he have to pay the bills as work is being done?
Yeah, it's, that's typical of Fran.
I mean, it sounds to me like it's something that has to be taken care of.
Oh, yeah, we're going to bury his accounting, he's already buried his accounting, told you. So we're going to just keep burying it, and then we'll fix it later on. Do you want to reference the things that we talked about, about the other projects, or?
Yeah, I was just going to talk about, so, out of the two hundred and eighty-three thousand that's left, they did solicit the department heads to ask them things that they might want. And so some of the things were fire department medic four, which is the lemon of a vehicle that we have. They were talking about remounting it again to the tune of about a hundred and fifty thousand. But since that happened, they think that they have found the problem with the vehicle, and it might cost somewhere between eight and ten thousand to fix. So the hundred and fifty's kind of as a reserve if the first thing doesn't work. The rec department was looking to purchase a cargo van so that they had a vehicle themselves, so that they could transport things between park and rec and wherever they had to go for events, whether it was Totaka Park, the auger property, just on their property, depending on what they had. The police department had requested putting money for the gun mounts in the vehicles, the guns that we purchased now need to be mounted in a box.
The rifles, it's because of the rifles.
The rifles, okay. So that was about ten thousand, another speed trailer for fifty-two hundred, and rescue backpacks for fifty-two hundred dollars. And Public Works had talked about finishing off the mezzanine in his building for additional office space, for about twenty-five thousand dollars. So those were some of the things that were presented to the finance committee. And then, you know, our recommendation, we just decided that everything was going to come back to the council. We cannot vote on it, it's a council vote. But we talked about not doing anything with the money right now, and just leaving it in reserve to see once what happens with some of these things. And my biggest issue is NVIS. I really want to complete that job. We have come so far in the few years we've been working on it. And it is a shame that, you know, we're probably going to be spending half a million dollars to fix the problem, but we need to get the problem solved once and for all. So there is money allocated there from the NVIS fund that we closed out and put in there, plus the money that was left over from what the board had given us from previous capital projects that we had approved for them, that they did not spend. So that's where that money comes from, that four seventy-one nine. But, you know, it hasn't gone out to bid, we just have the estimate, which was probably a pretty good estimate, and it was very thorough in their estimate, but it still has to go out to bid. So I'm, my thought is, is that we just sit on the money right now and wait and see once what happens. And if we still, after we do the NVIS project and we still have money, there's always the springtime, and we can always look at it again and see once if we want to do something. Are we putting that out to bid soon?
Well, we're going to, talking with Bill Chody, I think we had the auditorium, I think it made sense to put them, the two together, to work on it this fall, get it out early, early winter, and try and get it for next season.
My guess would be you'd have to work, Al would probably have the opposite, and I would, you'd have to wait till the springtime, you couldn't do that in the winter.
You'd never get it in before winter.
No.
So, yeah, it'd be next spring, you'd be doing the work.
Right, but we should-
But you'd have the bids.
Yeah, right, we should work on it now, get the bids, so that when springtime comes, they can start on it.
So basically, we'd have to wait on those other items until probably late spring?
Yeah, once we had the bid, I mean, if we got the bid specs together, put it out to bid, and even if we had it by January, February, the bid specs, and approved a bid amount, so that they could start in the springtime, when the weather was good, we would have a better idea at that time.
Anthony?
Yes, sir.
I noticed on the spreadsheet, there's a column that says council recommended.
Yes.
So what exactly does that mean?
Just like in the operating budget, there's a multi-step process. The departments submit a request.
Yeah.
The manager then chooses to either include or not include, and then the council chooses to take his list and either include or not include items.
So that's a line by line, I mean, we have authority over-
It's what we approved during the budget season.
Correct.
Right.
So we approved six million for a police station? Why don't we mention that?
That's not this year's.
It's, that's under bond funds?
And the number's probably wrong.
I know, I'm reading council recommended.
No, you're right, you're exactly right, and that's, that number's in there, and that was part of the package, that was, that was out there. Subsequently, that number, the last that I was asked to calculate, was closer to seven and a half.
That's one of the reasons why I asked to have it discussed, there's been no-
There's no resolutions before you for bonding yet, so again, it's not locked, nothing's locked in stone. It needs bonding resolutions from the bond council, and-
Right, I'm, my, yeah, my question, my only question is, did the council recommend six million dollars for a police station?
Right.
No, we didn't vote on it.
No, not these, we voted on it.
Okay, I'm just saying, but it's in that column, that's why I'm asking.
Good question, good question. The other two things that Deputy Mayor, there's other two things that were mentioned as far as additional potential uses of that money. There was an ask of fifteen thousand to appraise and survey fifteen ninety-nine, and there was an ask of fifteen to relocate the Little Red Schoolhouse. But again, the, I agree with your opinion to sit on everything until we get our NVIS squared away, and then we could address those next year. So there is a motion to send it, the only, I would add, question I would, or comment I would make also is the road improvement program that's listed in the sheets in front of you is incorrect. It will not affect the funding this year, so the send it to the eight twenty-four referral could still happen. I will, when I give it to Carrie, I'll give her the appropriate road improvement program that ties into the Town Engineers' Game Plan. But as far as the funding, it doesn't affect that at all.
Are there any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll read the motion. Be hereby resolved if the North Branford Town Council instructs the treasurer or finance director to forward the capital improvement plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review pursuant to Connecticut General Statute eight dash twenty-four, and bring it back to this body upon receipt of their action.
Second.
The motion's been made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Okay, next item is citizen statements and petition.
Local 1251, Middletown Avenue. I've got three things I'd like to bring up. This council's going to look a lot different in a couple weeks. I don't know if you're going to find another Al Rose that's going to bring his own ladder, go up on a school roof fifteen minutes before a council meeting, and give you the truth. That's going to be hard to replace. A man that knows how to build houses, he doesn't build shacks, he builds houses. It's going to be a tough hole to fill, and I, but I also know the man's a grandfather, a businessman, a farmer, so he's got a life, and God bless you, Al, for finally getting maybe a few minutes to enjoy. Leads into my next question, or my, what I want to explain. Tommy, you were asking about people that move into, next to a farm. It's like people that move in next to an airport. And I don't want Blight to be brought in, and I, being former chairman of the Agriculture Commission, there's this thing called Connecticut's Right to Farm Law. Now, Al and Alex, they don't work a forty-hour week, they don't work a fifty-hour week, they don't work a sixty-hour week. It's more like probably a hundred and twenty hours by the time they finally get some time off. So they get to work Saturdays and Sundays, and while the sun's still out. Maybe the neighbor that moves into the neighborhood with the two beamers and his highfalutin stereo and his gas-powered burn pit doesn't like that. Well, tough luck, because the key points of the Right to Farm are the odor from livestock, you're going to get an odor, and that's all part of the business. So you have to put up with odor. Noise from livestock or farm equipment used in normal, generally-accepted farming practices. Well, baling hay at seven o'clock at night before the sun goes down is a farming practice, so you're going to have to put up with that. Dust, well, guess what, when he turns that dirt over, it makes dust. You're going to have to put up with that. Proper chemical uses, he's going to put prop protectors down to protect his crops so he doesn't go broke. Water pollution, it might be an offspring of the crops or the livestock. So again, I want the Blight Committee to know that the Right to Farm is right there. You can Google it, and I don't want them to think, well, this is a blight issue, when it's a condition of this man, woman, or family to make a living off the land. We still do that a lot in this town, other towns do not. So we have to be agriculture-friendly, not agriculture-unfriendly. So I want the new town council to understand that as well. Which brings me up to my third point. There's going to be some new faces, some of the faces are going to still be here. But I think we've reached a point, if you watch the closed-circuit TVs of all the commissions, I'm not going to zero in on anyone, but I'm finding there still seems to be two agendas. The one on paper, and then the one that these people bring and don't leave at that door. Planning and zoning, inland wetlands, whatever the commission is, or park rec. So I think it should be mandatory, once we get the new town council, once we get new commissions and vacancies filled, everyone should go and, you know, be monitored by the town attorney and make sure everybody's on the same page. We're talking about a very, very, very expensive repair. You're reacting when in fact, and this is probably the third time I bring this up, maybe fourth, somebody acted improperly way down the road and approved that groove to bricking, or rake, or whatever you call it, when you had in your hand a piece of paper from the man that's going to do the job, that says, "Don't do it." Whoever didn't listen is now costing you thousands and thousands of dollars. So I think we need to tighten up our standards, our checks and balances. We do a good job with what we have, but we shouldn't be reacting so heavily to an act that was approved against the advice that was given to whoever said yes. And that never got caught, now it's coming around to bite you big time. Al, I wouldn't put my ladder up against that wall, it might fall over. We don't know what's going on behind that wall, we don't know what's going on in the front of that wall. But I'm glad, we're hoping it's finally going to go away. But we have too much history of shoulda, woulda, coulda. The Amblitz Barn, when we first built it, that was not safe, they had to rebuild it. So I think we just need to be smarter, maybe a little slower, but, but we end up, we get the bargain, but do we, we go back and we have to repair. And I've been here watching this long enough to know. So like I say, I'd like to see good replacements come in and work the job. But I'd also like to see everybody be properly trained as a commission member. You're giving your time, but sometimes you're giving too much of your own information. And I don't think it should continue, and I'm frustrated, and I'm honest. And I'm here to tell you, I watch these shows, I walk two and a half hours every weekday, so I get to watch it on my phone and listen on my headphones. And there's some stuff that's done borderline. I'm not going to name names or commissions, but I think we need to tighten things up and really make this more efficient. And, and maybe some of these members need to be talked to. Maybe they don't know they're doing something wrong. But just watch some of the videotape, and you'll see what I mean. So I'm hoping that the town becomes a better town in a couple months. You're good now, but you're going to, you know, you're going to move forward. It's going to be an adjustment period, and, but I think we can do better. Let's stop buying the bargains, let's buy the good stuff right away, and let's move on so you don't have to do damage control. Thank you.
Hey Cliff, I just want to respond, just so there's no misconception of my point on Blight. My whole point was the, I don't believe we need the Blight ordinance. It had nothing to do with towns, I was just using a comparison.
Okay.
I mean, excuse me, it had nothing to do with farms, I was just using a comparison, because I've been born and raised there, I understand farms.
I bet you some will sneak in there.
Yeah.
Because the average citizen doesn't know. If somebody knew- Because the average citizen doesn't know, if somebody new moves into town, I don't think they know the history we've got, we got the, look at this young man here, he doesn't know, he doesn't sit still, that's why he's so skinny, he works twenty-four, and Al, same thing, household family, you know, and it's, it's the nature of our town.
I understand.
But it's what makes our town great, because we don't, we have people that are not afraid to work. We're not like other towns. We're still almost back in the Ozzy inherit era, but, you know, but it's a good era to be in, right, because compared to what's happening in the rest of the world, we still doing pretty good in this town. Thank you.
Bill Servestero, to Cliff's point, I've mentioned this before at this meeting, in reference to the town commissions, I think it's time that you get them all on videotape. Police commission and the park and rec, those are the two big ones left.
Fire, fire commission isn't videotaped.
Well, do not we too? I mean, you do have the inlands and wetlands on, on the video. Can I first? Tom, I just want to show you this, this is part of the presentation that we made last November, and I had a board appear from articles that I took out in the paper for two years in advance of last November, and it was actually four different towns, it was Seymour, West Haven, and Sonia, which is a big Blight city. Mr. Moreno can attest to that, because Mr. John Marini, the corporate counsel for Ansonia, is in the same law firm, and he's the one that kind of controls all that. I'm not comparing towns and cities, I'm not. My only point is that all the towns around this, or just about all the towns, are Blight, and I think it's time, I think it's time we get there too. As far as the Totucket Times, and, and I notice, is, we're obviously too late for the next one, right?
Yes.
Now, as far, as far as this hearing, is this could be, this be tabled, but could be continued?
Possibly.
So maybe we ought to consider putting an ad in the Times, I mean, people watch the Times, I mean, you know from the P O C D that the biggest information getter in this town comes from the Times, and maybe social media, so let's send them the Times.
Well, the next issue is, we've already missed the deadline for that, before the October fifteenth meeting, so...
But I guess if we don't decide between now and then, we won't be able to get in the next one either.
Right, I mean, you won't know until after the meeting on the fifteenth, so then you can continue it, you'll have time between the fifteenth and the next count, if it gets continued, you would have time to put something in.
Couldn't we, excuse me, couldn't we apply for it, and then if there's no need for it, extract it, I mean, he's got a week, you put, you put it in by Friday, he wants it by Friday for the next Friday, but...
Correct.
He don't need it till Tuesday, actually, maybe.
Deputy Mayor, what I would suggest is, I understand the constituents' point, but there's no legal obligation for the town to incur a second expenditure related to the publication, that what we can explore with the paper is, if the town manager were to issue like a press release, maybe for free, we could get in a continuation of the hearing to avoid that added expense, because there is no legal obligation to go back to the paper, but I understand the point, most local papers will put matters of public interest like that in...
Yeah, you could, you could write a...
A press, just a press release.
Yeah.
Right. So, but I think, I think that, and, because what I have here is, October tenth is the publication hearing notice and the sound, assuming we get it done by tomorrow, and then we can find out what their next publication date would be, and we can just calendar it and try to make it happen.
Does it cost the same thing for the primary, huh?
Well, if you put a press release in, it does not cost, but if you put an ad or something, like if they have to put a notice for a public hearing, that would be considered an ad, and that, there's a charge for that. The Totucket Times, he's talking about the Totucket Times.
And a big thing that I didn't mention before, and if you see my letter, once it's cited to your agenda packet there, and I get it all in caps, is awareness, because nobody's looking to come down on anybody. And you referenced Tom to you, to the farmer, I don't think there's a farmer in town that wouldn't cooperate with a neighbor, so, and the key word from Mr. Moreno was earlier was discussion. So if a person has a complaint, they go to the Z E O, the Z E O, he's going to go to the farmer, and he's going to discuss. And that's, again, that's a key word, and awareness is where I'm coming from. Yes, I believe, and you'll see it in my letter, for the hard-nosed, the guys that don't conform, let's use the word conform, we all conform, we all have a license, we all pay taxes, we all conform, well, Blight is part of it. And... I think that's it, I mentioned the, thank you.
All right, Bill, thank you. Any other public comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
All in paper?
Aye.